You guys mostly together, both of you? Were you together?
No. Don't start rumors.
Are you under a lot of stress?
Your mind is always, that's what I've worked, my mind was always, especially after board meeting and the day before the board meeting, I'd be like, I need to get a good night's sleep, I need to get a good night's sleep. Bob and I would be like, you know, these young, you know, then I wouldn't sleep, so. I always say, do you want to...
My wife has an unbelievable ability to just take stuff and just not think about it. She'd hit the pillow and go to sleep like that.
You're welcome. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that roll be called, please.
Blue, here. Bowlesman?
Here.
Dishroom?
Here.
Bowleshauser?
Here.
Humble?
Here.
Ree?
Here.
Valen?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our August meeting. We'll start with our safety minute. And first, I have volunteers to call 911, first aid responders, and also volunteers who are certified in CPR. And our exits are off to the right and the left, and the AED machine is in the main hallway. If you could raise your hands, please, let me know who you are. I went a little bit out of order. Thank you. We updated our enrollment today at 4,461 students, which is actually 75 more students than last month and three fewer students than the end of last year. So we're growing by the minute, it seems like, and we're continuing to watch our enrollment very carefully, it's just changing every day. On Monday and Tuesday of this week, we had 30 teachers attend the new teacher orientation, and most of those teachers are bringing multiple years of experience with them, which will be an asset to our district and our students. Last week, Stratus completed our dark fiber project at all the schools, and over the weekend, Matt Jensen replaced the main switches in all eight schools, plus the data closets. And we were actually online and operational first thing Monday morning, so a big thank you to him. Our first Chromebook handbook meeting was last week, and we had another one last night at Ridgeview. And we have, I think, five more tomorrow, is that right? Four more at each of the middle schools. So after that, we will continue to target any of our families at open house and back-to-school nights. So, Sunday night, we hosted our first district Twitter chat. This is a way for our teachers to continue building their professional learning network and learn from other educators across the globe. We had close to 30 teachers and administrators from our district participate. Kudos to all of them. On Monday, we will welcome 593 members of our staff back, and all of our students will return on Wednesday. And we're excited to have everyone back in the building. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank my administrative team. This is one of the hardest times of the year, second to May, probably. This is probably just a little worse as we get ready to start school, and they've performed without any hitches and glitches, and I'm very proud of them. They're working very hard and working extremely long hours this time of year, so thank you to all of them. This concludes our report.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the public participation portion. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting, and now move on to the information and discussion items. School activity account reports are available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Okay. At the board retreat last month, it was discussed to change the board norms and code of conduct. Both are available in the packet for review. Are there questions and comments about that?
I would like to comment, make a, hopefully, a proposal for this. So the word, the verbage in there, inappropriate conduct, to me, just seems a little bit vague, so I was kind of playing around with some language, and I was...
Is this norms or conduct?
Conduct.
Okay.
Conduct. So I came up with, if we're on the same thing, are we on that email thing? "I will refrain from inappropriate conduct in making public statements on Facebook and social networking sites that disparage other board members or others on personal, social, racial, or religious basis." So just making that slight change to kind of get the vagueness out of inappropriate.
Could you repeat that?
So as he reads today, so you see the one here today, so what I'm suggesting is, it would read, "I will refrain from inappropriate conduct in making public statements on Facebook and social networking sites that disparage other board members or others on a personal, social, racial, or religious basis." And then the rest of the paragraph as well. Okay with that? So that might be my suggestion.
It sounds more, it's not substantive, it just cleans it out.
Cleaner.
Not having refrained twice. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for the time you took on that, Lisa.
I think it looks good.
Okay. Information regarding the location of the Dunlap High School graduation is available in the packet for the board's review. Are there any questions? Okay. Information regarding the Dunlap High School summer school is available in the packet for board's review. Mr. Adrian is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Adrian? I would just say that it was a fabulous opportunity. I heard so many great comments from parents and students, and so kudos, it was wonderful. It's going to open up so many kids' schedules so they can take those dual credit and engage in other opportunities, so I think it was great.
And we're looking forward to what you will bring us next year. We're looking forward to what you will bring us next year.
Oh, yeah. What is that?
Yeah, I want to say the same thing. I think it went well. I read all the comments from the students, and you got overwhelming, you know, positive responses from the students. I just think it's a good offering. The one question I wanted to ask was, is there anything that you would change in the way it's structured right now?
Well, you know, regarding the survey, you know, I've done a survey, we had 95% of the respondents saying a lot of negative things, and they were glowing. So we're really encouraged about that. The 5% that weren't positive were just like, could you make it later today? We're really fond of that. I really would like to move the summer school program to a, so Dunlap High School's a year-round school opportunity, almost like a course selection guide for the fall semester, spring semester, and summer semester. And I don't think we should be limiting it with just the format we provided this year. I think that would be easy and clean and neat, but I think it could expand into some upper-level classes that maybe we don't have, can't fit into a student's calendar during the school year, but we look at it with open mind, and maybe have it span across the summer in a blended format as well. So we're going to work with our IOT teams and come up with classes they may have wanted to offer, but for whatever reason, the enrollment numbers conflicts, could offer, and we can hopefully offer those in a different format that works more for an independent learner, they can do things on their own, they'll challenge themselves.
What does blended mean?
It means part-time online, where they don't meet in person, and other times they meet in person. So it can be once a week, we're going to meet in person, and then we're going to do the work online, but we can do it in college, so that's a possibility, plus keeping the same format for some of our other requirements, like we talked about, speech was one that was really hot. PE is one, if people really want to get moved down their schedule, that would take some creativity, but certainly doable. But on the flip side, if you have four hours for physical education during the day, you could do the bowling, you could do the fishing, you could do the golfing, you could do some different things. So I think going into it, we're going to keep it really open-minded and see if we can capture more students, so maybe capture interest in their need for it.
Maybe a summer one and a summer two? Like, same course, different, I mean, in case they're on vacation, you can't catch...
And, you know, it could be, I could have two sessions this summer, but we could have, like I said, if we're open-minded, we could have a blended session that spans the whole summer, or June and July, and gives them that August break. So we're just trying to be open-minded, creative, and get those credits.
Who taught the courses?
Sorry?
Who taught the courses?
We had two teachers, one, well, we had a lady from Quest Academy, Sue Donnelly, and then a lady from Princeville taught the first session of Talk for Raps. Colleen, Donna, Dawn, and Sue Mercer. And then Annie Stansfield taught the second semester of the session at Talk for Raps.
And then Civics was the...
Civics was the...
The Donlin.
Colleen Donlin taught the first section of Civics. And we were very pleased, very experienced teachers, they rolled with everything, the kids liked it, but, you know, you've got your kids that are really interested in learning, and give them ahead, so there's no discipline issue. You know, we had 79 out of 81 students finish, and as a retention issue, they could be met requirement, but kids were really appreciative of the opportunity.
Great, well, thank you so much. There's information regarding the IHSA lacrosse Dunlap students' participation fee available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions regarding the participation fee?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the participation fee. As far as students that are free and reduced, what is the fee for that?
There would be a per student, would be a wage for free and reduced.
So there will be no, so reduced, there's not a reduced fee?
I was originally under the assumption that, I thought it was 350, not the 450 minus the 100, but no big deal, but moving forward, I don't know if we could work on equalizing all fees, if you want to base that on the cost of a sport, and maybe different sports would cost different fees because some are more expensive than others. And I don't think lacrosse should be penalized just because it's a new sport. So just going forward, taking maybe a look at that.
In addition to the $100 activity, is what you're saying?
Well, I would, I mean, I would, however you want to do it, but this would, this is the only sport, right, that has an additional fee on top of it? So going forward, I don't know if they should be penalized because, you know, they're new. If you have to raise others, lower others, be creative, be fair.
Yeah, I agree with Beth, and I think that, you know, going forward, we need to look at some kind of waiver system. If you have students that come forward, is there a formal procedure for them to say, hey, I'll have $450, but I'd love to try lacrosse? You know, what do we have, you know, in place that we're going to try to supplement that as far as fees?
That's kind of being held now, even with the extra fees, so if there's a student that they know about a school that they want, that wants to play lacrosse, then, you know, maybe they're not there, they just want to be good in the season, all the time, to cover some of those costs, you know, like, you don't want having to pay to be able to sell anything.
And do we have a kind of a procedure that you have to be a certain percentage above the free and reduced lunch, or is it a very informal, subjective?
I was going to say, too, I think the lacrosse club head said that they would buy...
Right, yeah, I think they raised, yeah, a lot of money.
And they raised money already.
So are they going to be able to donate that for that purpose?
I think that's their...
And would you allow that?
We had a little bit of a discussion about that, and if they were going to donate to the school, then because of our activity capital, we changed that, so they're good and friendly.
Okay. So offer scholarships or something for those students?
And this might get interesting, we were at one of the meetings the other night, and, oh, I don't remember his name, shoot, tall guy, looks like you.
Ted, Ted.
Mr. Klein, yeah.
And he's not to us. So this is something new, and I thought it was really interesting, where you can donate your, for your athletic, or your spot, your, what is it, boosters, but anything over $35 can, you can actually apply to a sport.
Oh, uh-huh.
So, you know, that might change the way money is shuffled and handled, so that was, that was into, that was nice to see that.
That's a question that does, in fact, to your comment, I don't care if I talk about trying to keep, I guess, tally on what each specific sport costs, you know, because a lot of different things can run about, that there are a few that bring in revenue, or just kind of trying to keep a better tally of that this year, we still can have that stuff.
I mean, it's hard, and it's not going to be absolutely equal, but just as long as, you know, it's fair at best, best you can do.
Is the board comfortable with the $450? I just, because that's what we had always said administratively, but I've heard, you're not the first person to say that.
I spoke with the lacrosse, Mr. Hake, and I think he's, they're okay with it.
It's pretty consistent with what everybody's paying currently.
Okay, I just want to make sure before we bring an action item.
So I think going forward, though, I think it's reasonable to kind of see it along a long-term basis if that remains that high or not.
You guys okay with it?
Yeah, I think, I think long-term, though. I think I would like to see it, you know, normalized with the other activities. You shouldn't be penalized for a specific sport or activity, you know, so hopefully over time, you know, it'll, it'll be able to be in the budget the way you would want it to be fully funded.
Okay, any other questions about that fee? Okay. There's information regarding the district office lease renewal available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer questions. Are there any questions about that?
No, no movement, no way to get them to hold. I know we tried before, we tried to negotiate with them, we've been with them for a long time, we're excellent, you know, tenants, and they continue to push the number up.
They're, they continue, yeah, it is still lower than about anywhere else we can go that includes other things, you know, other than building our own building and moving out, that's pretty much the only...
Given, given the enrollment numbers not going down, is there a plan for a discussion on whether or not we'll need to expand, and then at that point, there could be a building? Okay.
I think if this is any indication, I don't think we're going to have a whole lot of choice this time of this school year, I think. I think our hands are probably going to be tied, and I think we need to address the district office.
At the same time...
It doesn't necessarily need to be attached to wherever we would do additions, but I think it all needs to be one project.
At the same time, because we get a discount, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Since we're renewing this annually, is there any risk that it won't be available in the future? Are they anticipating so in the building or anything like that? The way the agreement is written is we have to let them know by October, otherwise, we have to let them know by October, we don't know by then that we, that we get to maintain.
Is there a possibility they would come back and say, we don't, we cannot renew because they, is there a risk that...
He's very good at, he's very good at communicating with, with us, and he has given no indication that they, he did in the past, but not recently, yeah.
Yeah, so it's kind of set up that way, and we keep open communication. I know we talked about it a few years ago, they had taught us how to resell a facility, and I think that would be an issue possibly as far as being able to renew, but I think we would know that plenty of time in advance.
Just, just putting out the spot with Matthews, what's the per-square-foot cost?
The per-square-foot cost of...
Correct.
I don't know again, I don't have any idea how much, what footage we have.
We have a folder at the office, I can tell you that much.
But I thought it was like 15 bucks or something like that.
I was going to say 14-something, but that might have been a couple of years ago when I did it.
But that's a pretty good rate, I just want to make sure, confirm that.
Yeah.
I could do it real quick on here, but I don't see the square footage on here.
Yeah, I don't know what this work footage is.
I think it was like 15.
It's in the contract.
Well, I would think if we're planning on building a year, it wouldn't make sense to move.
I agree at this point, it's very, it's always an inconvenience to move your central office, but I would like to see, with so many uncertainties, we need to wait and see, but I would really like to see us not paying rent for, you know, at that 75,000, 80,000 a year, five or six years, you know, that adds up, and we put something on that little quarter up here, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the lease? Okay. Information regarding the FY '18 budget is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions about the budget? I know you already answered a bunch of mine, so, um, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, it was very helpful, yeah, to have all that.
I forgot to put the numbers on the paper, they didn't want to figure it out, so.
You had a question, Teresa, about the health care, that's 10%, and, and, we think that's going to continue...
Yes, it can be, you had asked if we could put a number to that 10%, and absolutely we can to take it and discuss it as far as what that increase costs, negotiations, maybe a percentage.
Right, right. And that 10% guess is just kind of what the market is anticipating are the increases every year, right?
Yes, it's the market. What's it historically been at with the last five? Well, well, we are, we have been lower than the market, if the 15, 10, 15, 18%, Brian might even go better, but this year it's 14, 15% across the market for an increase. So 10% is low, that's based on where we're at right now, it's the idea of what we think will happen next year is what I think for the 10%.
So this year it was 10%?
No, this year we were only, just under 5% for an increase.
Wow.
The board updating the way they mount United Healthcare, they, the rates are the same as they were last year as far as the premium rates, but their trust is no longer subsidizing the trust rate, so the rate that the district is paying is higher, but the actual premium rate is the same.
So that fund in the trust that was built up, is it now down?
It is now down to what the, to what the board had in there as far as what they want to have in reserves in case we have to go self-funded.
So they, this will be the last year? So, are they, is it going out for bid this year, again?
We went out for bid, yes, we go out for some, and it went out for bid this summer. The plan would, it's, will still be with United Healthcare, but...
So what was the increase?
The increase as far as the premium rate was zero through the plan.
So you're talking next year, 10%?
We're talking next year. She's got, she was talking about the projections, I have 10% in projections.
That's, I think that's a generous projection.
You, over the years, to go back to Teresa, your question, I think if you look back, it's been really, some years, I think you really cut, went down, you went negative on, with the plan originally, and so it hasn't been really, I mean, the increases have been low, which I'm really surprised.
But isn't that because they've been subsidized by that account? No, well, they have had a good experience.
No, it's just the actual United Healthcare rates, the rate rates.
And that group is a healthy group, they've had a very good experience, so.
We're a favorite for this area, and so they found it hard to get our business, so we get really good rates, and we go out with it, they come in with their plans, and we feel they don't like them, we really do this, this, and this, and Abby's been part of that. So we find pretty hard to get those rates. I will tell you, United Healthcare came in, their original, their first go-around was, before it even got to us, when it was just with the consultants, they were like 30% increase. Then when they actually put, when we got to final bid, we were at 18%, and we're like, okay, bye, we'll see you later, and we ended up with a 0% increase, so we know we play with pretty good hardball with them, keep in mind.
So 10% is very conservative, from what you're, what I'm hearing, right?
Yes.
Because when I'm looking at those projections, and then when you see red going there, so you don't try and understand where that break even point is. Thank you. Other questions about the budget? Any other questions? Okay. There's information regarding future agenda items for the board's review. Dr. Parker did not receive any additional items. Does the board have any requested agenda items for future board meetings?
I do.
Okay.
I have one. You want me to read it or just submit it to you?
I agree with you.
You can read it.
Like, it's regardless, it has to be submitted.
You want me to read it?
You can read it.
Oh, all right. Agenda item request, I would just, would like to have a review of the headlights practice, why the item should be placed on agenda, I just feel that a significant number of parents favor some type of general notification. Possible outcome, perhaps a slight revision to the practice, or to the, you know, it's not a policy, right, it's a practice, okay, or procedure. Is it a good topic? Yes, because it impacts families that we serve, and the item will provide progress for the district connected to our goals and focused area. Yes, as stated in our mission, we want to respect our role in active partnership with parents, and as goal four states in the strategic plan, to increase communication and improve levels of satisfaction. And then, you know, when, I don't know how often, how quickly, within the next month or two, three, I don't know how that goes, but we could just maybe discuss it.
I don't think we need a whole, we just did this a few months ago. I don't know if, is there anybody at the table who wants the full presentation again?
No.
Or just maybe a...
Maybe it's an opportunity for, I think, the Student Services that Ally presented, maybe to meet with her and get the...
I've seen the presentation, and I've seen the slideshow.
I sent it to her.
Oh.
I think she was here, were you not?
I was in the audience, too.
I just need to make sure there's a consensus to bring it back, and then we'll bring it back.
Okay. Is there a consensus to bring it back?
I, I'm, yeah, I'm fine with what was presented before.
Okay.
And I am as well.
Okay.
I would like to bring it back.
Okay.
I would like to bring it back.
I would as well.
I'm fine with what was presented previously.
Okay. We will bring it back.
Okay, are there any other agenda items, future agenda items to submit?
I just have one comment, I don't think this is agenda items. Just shortly before the meeting started, we talked about the census, the enrollment, and we talked about the sixth day. Is it better, actually, because we, you mentioned that there was a decline up to Labor Day, and so maybe that would be a better number for tracking purposes as opposed to the sixth, but this is for you guys.
It is, and the only reason, and I think Renata does it every week now.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, we have a spreadsheet that we use every week, but the official number is the sixth day because that's what the state is doing, that kind of thing, but I can, when we get ready to do our projections, my plan was to wait until it gets a little closer to Labor Day and tell them that day is when to pick. Usually it's the sixth day that they do our projections based on, but I thought I would wait until things kind of leveled out a little bit.
And Sherwood's here, so what they find is that come Labor Day, many people have asked for their paperwork to be forwarded, and so the enrollment actually goes down.
Or it can go up, depending on our...
Or it can go, yeah, good. Usually down, but you never know. Yeah. No, that's a very good point.
Okay, this concludes the information discussion items segment of the meeting, and now we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda? Okay, there are no clarifications or discussion items, I'd ask for a motion of your question. Does that include the survey? Are we... The consent agenda, it is the survey, the climate survey. One thing that I forgot to bring up last month is, and I think it's great, I'm wondering if a question could be asked for feedback about the district, or asking about the teachers and the administration, and what about the board? You know, like Kat and other places do 360 reviews, just add a question. I remember we asked before if we could submit questions, and they said, and the answer was no.
We submitted some that go along with our balance scorecard.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, but I think what you're asking is, could we do something similar to what we do with our instructional leadership teams or our department leadership teams?
Just the same question.
The same question, but use the Board of Education instead.
Right, substituting, just so there's a 360 that stakeholders can provide feedback in that one document.
And it's just like yes or no, it's, yeah.
I'm kind of done.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think it's something that changes it.
No, it should have brought it up last month, yeah, because it won't be no profit at all, because that...
That's fine. So we can approve it with that change?
Yes, that's fine.
So, any other questions or comments about the consent agenda? Okay, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with that small change as presented for the August 9th, 2017 Board of Education meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented, August 9th, 2017, Board of Education.
Second, okay. It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Cheryl Blue. It's their discussion. Seeing none, could we please have a roll call?
Blue?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
Dishroom?
Aye.
Bowleshauser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zouin?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Good, motion carries.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented August ninth, two thousand seventeen, Board of Education meeting.
Second, okay. It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call?
Lou.
Aye.
Bowlesman.
Aye.
Dishroom.
Aye.
Holzhouser.
Aye.
Humble.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zouin.